Good evening and welcome to tonight's meeting of Troy City Council for Monday, January 6th. I am not Marty Baker. I am Bill Lutz, President of Council. This is your final reminder to please turn off all your electronic devices for the duration of the meeting. We will begin tonight's meeting with an invocation and then we'll go straight from the pledge of allegiance. Our invocation tonight is from our newest member, Mr. Zach Allen.
Dear Lord, dear Lord, please give us, please give this newly elected mayor and council the knowledge and wisdom to guide over our city the next two years. Give us the clarity to always do it as best for the growth and prosperity of our beautiful community and its citizens. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Moving on, Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Allen.
Present.
Mr. Phillips.
Here.
Mr. Rozell.
Here.
Mr. Schilling.
Here.
Mr. Schwizer.
Here.
Mr. Severt.
Here.
Mrs. Snee.
Here.
Mr. Twilliger.
Here.
Mr. Twist.
Here.
All members of council are present.
Excellent. Moving on, our first item of organizational business for 2020 is ordinance oh one twenty twenty. Mrs. Knight, will you please read the ordinance?
Ordinance number oh one twenty twenty, ordinance employing clerk of council and fixing compensation, first reading.
Are there any comments or questions on the ordinance? If not, I will entertain a motion.
Move for suspension.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Phillips and seconded by Mr. Severt. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Schwizer?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Move for adoption.
Second.
It has been moved by Mr. Phillips and seconded by Mr. Schwizer. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Schwizer?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted.
The ordinance is adopted. At this time, I will ask Mr. Kerber, our Law Director, to administer the oath of office to the, to our returning clerk, Mrs. Knight.
Please raise your right hand. I sue G. Knight.
I sue G. Knight. I solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Ohio, that I will faithfully, honestly, and impartially discharge the duties of the office clerk of council, city of Troy, state of Ohio during my continuance in said office.
That is beyond impressive. Beyond impressive.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Mrs. Knight. You get to work with us for the next two years.
I'm looking forward to it, sir.
Our next item of organizational business is the election of a president of council pro tem.
Mr. President. I'd like to nominate Bobby Phillips for council president pro tem.
It is, we have a nomination and a second for Mr. Phillips. He's been, he's been nominated by Mr. Schwizer and the nomination has been seconded by Mr. Twist. Are there any other nominations? Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Schwizer?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Sure.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
It's a yes or no.
Approved.
Congratulations, Bobby.
Thank you very much. Thank you, gentlemen.
Our, our next item of organizational business is the election of the clerk of council pro tem.
I'll make a motion to nominate Mr. Twist as our secretary pro tem.
I'll second that.
Mr. Twist has been nominated by Mr. Phillips. The nomination has been seconded by Mrs. Snee. Are there any further nominations for the benefit of Mr. Twist? Hearing none. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Schwizer?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes, I'm glad you never get six, Sue.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
It's approved.
Congratulations, Mr. Twist. Moving on the agenda, Mrs. Knight, will you please read a summary of the minutes of the December 16th, 2019 meeting of council?
Minutes of council, December 16th, 2019. A presentation was made by Dan Foley of the Great Miami Riverway to outgoing Mayor Beamish and council member Kendall. Committee reports, Community and Economic Development Committee recommended that legislation be prepared related to an annexation filed by Linda, on behalf of Linda Harshbarger, Patricia Harshbarger and Linda Rocco. Resolution number R. 58, 2019, services for certain annexed territory was given first reading and adopted. Resolution number R. 59, 2019, buffering requirements for certain territory to be annexed was given first reading and was adopted. Ordinance number oh forty-one, 2019, related to keeping sidewalks clear of certain items was given third reading and adopted. Following various comments, council then did adjourn at 7:47 PM.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. If there are no corrections, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the minutes.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Schwizer and seconded by Mr. Schilling to approve the minutes. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Schwizer?
Yes.
Minutes are approved.
Excellent. Moving on, I do not believe we have any committee reports tonight. We will move on to citizen comments on committee reports or items on the agenda. At this time, if there's any citizens that wish to speak on resolution R. 1, 2020, now is your chance. Please come to the podium, give your name and address. You have two minutes and Mr. Kerber is our timekeeper. Seeing no one, no one moving forward, we will move on to resolutions. Resolution R. 1, 2021. Mrs. Knight, will you please read the resolution?
Resolution number R. 1, 2020, resolution authorizing the sale during calendar year 2020 of municipally owned personal property which is not needed for public use or which is obsolete or unfit for the use for which it was acquired by internet auction pursuant to Ohio Revise Code, section 721.15D. This is a piece of legislation done at the first meeting of new, of the new year to authorize the use of internet auctions at which point council declares surplus property, first reading.
Are there any comments or questions on the resolution?
Move for suspension.
Second.
It has been moved by Mr. Phillips and seconded by Mr. Schwizer to suspend the three reading rule. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Schwizer?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Second.
It has been moved to adopt the resolution by Mr. Schwizer and seconded by Mr. Twist. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Schwizer?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. We have dispensed of all resolutions and we have no ordinances remaining on the agenda. We will move into communications and announcements. Mrs. Knight, are there any communications or announcements? Excellent. At this time, I would like to bring forward Mrs. Amy, Ms. Amy Shannon and Mr. Justin Kobe from Health Partners Free Clinic to do a presentation to council. I'll preface this by saying, last month, the Troy Foundation had their Growing a Greater Tomorrow event at Hobart Arena in which a number of local nonprofits participated. And I saw a lot of information being shared between nonprofits and residents. And so what I've offered to do is offer a few minutes of every council meeting for those participating nonprofits that want to participate, to come forward and just give a small presentation about their organization, but more importantly, what benefit they're providing to the citizens of Troy. So, Mr. Kobe, the floor is yours.
Fantastic. I want to thank you personally for reaching out to all of our organizations, President Lutz, and giving us this opportunity in front of the council. Thank you for all your time. I'm sure many of you are familiar with Health Partners Free Clinic. We've been around since 1998, built our own facility in 2007 out on 25A where we were able to open up five days a week, where we're seeing patients who are uninsured. It's patients who don't have insurance, patients who are underinsured, patients who have insurance they can't afford, and then patients who are underserved. That's individuals who have insurance that no doctors will take. This is a new addition to our mission. Back in 2015, when we realized the Affordable Care Act was going to increase the amount of insurance but not increase the amount of providers. To add to that, there are a lot of hidden nuances in the law that talk about Medicaid and how many Medicaid patients you have to take or required to take. That left a lot of people out in the cold, literally, and so we decided to start seeing those patients, keep them out of the ERs. And now, we don't charge a bill, so there was no insurance reimbursement that came to us for doing so. But we felt it was important not to be sending patients to the ER that otherwise should be seen in a chronic care disease state management fashion. Going forward from there, what we discovered is that also individuals who are seeking care at our clinic really struggle with our scheduling system. So, we had scheduled appointments five days a week and what we started doing in 2015 is opening some time up in Monday mornings for a walk-in. We recently decided on Thursday afternoons to start our walk-in at 1:00, allowing people to access care on their schedule. When people come into our clinic and access care, they're going to be seen by a nurse practitioner, they're going to receive their medications and counseling from a pharmacist, their blood is going to be taken to look at the labs and diagnostics, they'll be able to interact with Amy, our social worker, so we can look at the social determinants of health, which would be issues with transportation, food, housing, those sorts of things. They can sit down and talk to an insurance counselor, whether that's for Medicare or Affordable Care Act or Medicaid insurance plans, they'd be able to access that. So, we want to be this holistic care and we want it to happen all at the same time. So, we understand that transportation's an issue. We do, at the clinic, we feel it is. And so, what we've done to try to combat that is we, we look at what can we do and what services can we provide in the moment, right in and in there. So, that's where we really focus a lot of our attention to. Since 2015 moving forward, that's where we've been. What I have in front of you is a folder. Inside of that, there's some information about the clinic, but there's also a handout, a slide deck, I should say, and this is actually something I'm going to be presenting at Rotary, I believe, on the 16th. So, if you want the real presentation, come there and enjoy. But what we've kind of seen is why healthcare doesn't work. And believe it or not, in little old Miami County, Ohio, we can actually investigate ways to change healthcare that would work on a more global scale. One thing we've realized, though, is that the logistics of healthcare are an issue. And we can target that because we don't receive reimbursement. So, none of our services are tied to, well, can we bill you for that? Will your insurance cover that? Will they take this drug? That sort of thing. We can eliminate all that barrier. Then if you look on page number five, on the bottom, I did a quick value stream map of the typical interface with healthcare. So, a lot of wasted time and can I get an appointment? How long is it going to take for me to get in there? Once I'm in there, how long does it take for me to fill out paperwork? I see the doctor, now I gotta go to discharge and then I'm sent across town to the pharmacy. Oh, it's not filled yet. Okay, whatever. Now, I'll go and get my labs done. I gotta sit there for 30 minutes, go back to the pharmacy. Oh, it's not covered by my insurance, yada, 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 yada. A lot of obfuscation, a lot of confusion, okay? If you turn over to page six, what we've done at the clinic is try to vertically integrate all those services. So, again, I'm not saying that there should be no cost to healthcare. What I'm saying is, there's no tie to reimbursement for the services we provide at the clinic and it's a model that's operating five days a week because of the generosity of those in the county. We are funded by individuals who donate, obviously through the Troy Foundation, UVMC, other large foundations, and individual donors, companies that are very kind to us. So, we can do this in a more succinct way. So, you see this value stream map where everything that's going to be done is going to be done in the clinic at that same moment. This shouldn't seem like rocket surgery, right? Well, to be honest, it really is in our current model of healthcare because what we've done is tied everything to reimbursement. All of our outcomes are tied to reimbursement. So, if you didn't, if you didn't bill your insurance for receiving some kind of procedure or medication, it doesn't exist. It never happened. That's how we evaluate whether or not you receive quality healthcare. We made a big, big mistake. And this happened back in the progressive era when we were looking at how do we do health insurance? Well, yada, yada, yada. Come, come to the presentation at Rotary, you'll get the full deal. What I'm saying here is that we really missed the boat on looking at what truly are the healthcare needs in our community. And as we've had these thoughts, one way we've pivoted is towards finding how do we connect with people that have chronic diseases, that have diabetes, hypertension, high cholesterol before they train wreck, before they have myocardial infarction, a heart attack, before they have a stroke? Where do we find these people at? Our theory is this, where there lies food insecurity, there also lie chronic care disease state management issues. That's not to say that you couldn't be, you wouldn't, you wouldn't be in a well-to-do environment and still have chronic care disease state management. So, what we found is that people who are living in areas where they can't access food well, okay? So, what we did is we teamed up with Wright State University and we went and did that, that look at the, at food insecurity and we presented on that already. But we found it in certain areas and we went to those certain areas and started doing outreach clinics. So, we do screenings, I should say. So, we do blood pressure, blood sugar. And we say to the individual who's there at, say, a soup kitchen, it's where we partner with a lot of our peoples at a soup kitchen, we'll say, you know, look, look at your numbers. You're really high, your blood sugar's high, your blood pressure's high. You may not be able to afford a doctor, but we have a place for you to come. And we'll take care of that individual and make sure that they're getting scheduled or they're being seen at the walk-in and we're going to resolve that issue. That is a community health concern. So, if that is a community health concern, how do we drill down and solve it even more? Well, one of the things we've looked at is food insecurity. And we partnered with Ohio State University, the Extension Office, to start a community garden program that's going to be on our property. We were in the very beginnings of that, just landed the money. Now, we're going to move forward. The one last thing I would like for Amy to talk about is the food insecurity and how we're going to work with Shared Harvest moving forward in that.
I've talked to you quite a bit about Shared Harvest and the opportunities that they've presented to us. They come to our food insecurity meetings, so they're coming all the way up from Warren County to meet with us and figure out ways to approach Miami County and to get the food out there. We're currently doing the pop-up pantries once a month. They're going to be on the fourth Saturday of each month. We're kind of rotating locations, but I will make sure you guys are aware of those. This next clinic or pop-up pantry, we're going to have, I believe, 18 pallets of food, which equates to about 15,000 pounds, I believe, is what I read. You know, the last one, we served close to 300 people. We're hoping to serve around 400 with this one. So, it takes a lot of volunteers, it takes a lot of work, but we're getting actual produce, real food, some frozen meat into people's hands and giving them an opportunity to have that there. Shared Harvest is also working with us within our own clinic. We have many diabetics who tell us that when they go to the various soup kitchens and food pantries, the food that they're getting is not diabetic-friendly. So, Shared Harvest is actually going to be opening a small little pantry within our building as well. So, not only can people walk out with their medications and with having seen the nurse, they can also walk out with some fresh produce and some food that can feed them and feed them healthily. So, we're really trying to look at all the different ways that we can do this. We do a lot of partnering within the community, which is another reason why it's really wonderful that we're not having to answer to governmental things, we're not having to fill out a lot of paperwork. We can just go out there and do what we need to do. And we're doing that with UVMC, we do it with Kettering, we do it with a lot of the agencies in the area, to try to make sure that we're hitting as many issues as we can and under our doors.
Questions?
Go ahead.
I did. I appreciate the service, I do. And so, please don't take this wrong and I hope the public viewing this doesn't take it wrong. But we, the goal is to work to zero and to serve those so that, you know, when the numbers go up. But with the demographic, are we serving elderly, unemployable? What's, how do we break this down with, with the folks that, that are serving particularly with what you're talking about, Amy?
Yeah, well, we're not, we're not particularly watching the age numbers on the food insecurity, if that's what you're asking.
Well, we have some.
Yes.
We have some. We do break down when we do the pop-up pantries, people who are over 60 and then children and then others. And we're hitting, I apologize, we are, I talk so loud anyway. We are about a third of the people that we serve at each of those pop-up pantries is over 60 and we are seeing an increase in that. We actually have a couple volunteers who are starting to literally go to Terrace Ridge and pick up five people in a van and bring them to these pop-up pantries because they don't have a way to get there otherwise. It's another one of our issues, is people being able to get to this food. So, we see a lot of people that are, are coordinating. So, with the pop-ups, the issue is a lot of times poverty. We see a lot of cars that are about to run out of gas, a lot of cars that I can't believe actually move, and a lot of elderly. It's been kind of a shock to me.
So, what's that?
Folks that obviously are living in their cars. So, we are, we've had several people who've rolled up on bikes who tell us that they are homeless. And so, we're sending home with them, well, to wherever they're at with them, whatever food that they can use. So, yes, we're definitely seeing that. Within the clinic, I think Justin can speak too.
Yeah, the breakdown of numbers of the clinic are not the same. We are see, 50% of our folks are employed, but they're gig economy, working several part-time jobs, can't get insurance, that sort of thing. We don't see a lot of elderly because we're able to get them to the Medicare counselor, get them on some Medicare. But we do when we, when we need to, if the need's there.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council members?
Question on the residency. You said that it's Miami County residents?
Yeah.
Are there qualifiers on how long you have been a Miami County resident?
No. And I'll mention that Montgomery County's Free Clinic was recently defunded. So, we do have people calling and asking about that, so.
We do what we can.
Yeah, we do what we can.
What is the trends on the number of care that you've provided? Is that going up? Has it been pretty steady for the last three years? So, what's that?
Yeah. 2015, when the Affordable Care Act was, was hot and heavy, we saw about a 20% decrease. This past year, and we stayed level at that.
Right.
So, it dropped and then plateaued. This past year, preliminary numbers are showing a 3% to 4% increase from last year. And what we're seeing is a lot of individuals coming through and saying, I can't afford my insurance, I can't afford my meds. That's the big thing.
Any other questions from council members?
Thank you for your time tonight. We really appreciate it.
Thank you, Amy.
Thank you.
Moving on to comments. Ladies and gentlemen, it is my pleasure to introduce to you for the first time in this forum, the Honorable Mayor of the City of Troy, Robin Oda.
I have nothing to say. Pardon? I really don't have much to say tonight, but thank you.
You could be a law director.
It's been several interesting days, a lot of firsts, and I'm enjoying it. And we'll go from here. Looking forward to a good year.
Thank you, Mayor. Moving on to the Director of Public Service and Safety, Mr. Titterington.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just three items that are in your items of interest, but I want to point out. Leaf collection, we are in the third round. The piles are drawing down, but I know there are still a few out there, so we will be collecting through January. MLK Day is the 20th. City Hall is closed. However, we are on schedule with refuse and recycling, so there's no delay. We've had, we had the two delayed days last month and January 1st, I guess, and so we're on schedule until next time. Third one is, is given that the holidays are over, those who have natural, real trees and are disposing of them, want to remind people that we will pick them up through January. However, from time to time, we have those that either forget or they just, they don't forget and they just pick up the tree as is and put it out to the curb. And they can't do that. We can't collect it if it's got the decorations, the tree stand, the lights, any of those, because we do throw them through a chipper and it's a little more difficult if you're putting plastic metal and other materials through it other than wood. But again, that will be, until February 1st, we will collect those if they put them out at the curb. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Titterington.
You're welcome.
Moving on to the Director of Law, Mr. Kerber.
I guess you knew what I was going to say there, Mr. Schwizer. I have nothing to add. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kerber. And our City Auditor, Mr. Friggy.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have nothing at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Friggy. I would like to make a quick announcement for our 2020 and 2021 City Council Committee assignments. Our Finance Committee for this term will be made up of Chairman, Mr. Schwizer, and members, Mr. Phillips and Mr. Severt. Our Law and Ordinance Committee will be chaired by Mr. Severt with members, Mr. Schwizer and Mrs. Snee. Our Community and Economic Development Committee will be chaired by Mrs. Snee with members, Mr. Rozell and Mr. Twist. Our Street and Sidewalks Committee will be chaired by Mr. Phillips with members, Mr. Schilling and Mrs. Snee. The Buildings and Utilities Committee will be chaired by Mr. Allen with members, Mr. Twilliger and Mr. Twist. Our Community Partnership Committee will be chaired by Mr. Rozell with members, Mr. Allen and Mr. Schwizer. Our Parks and Recreation Committee will be chaired by Mr. Schilling with members, Mr. Phillips and Mr. Twilliger. Our Personnel Committee will be chaired by Mr. Twist with members, Mr. Allen and Mr. Severt. And finally, our Safety and Health Committee will be chaired by Mr. Twilliger with members, Mr. Rozell and Mr. Schilling. Are there any comments from any council members tonight? Mr. Schelling?
Yes. I have a question for Mr. Titterington. As probably many of you are aware, MetroNet, which is an internet provider, high-speed internet provider, has decided to come to Troy and set up their network. And they have started to install the lines and this type of thing. And it seems like they've, at least I've noticed it in my neck of the woods. And talking to some of the residents, they have had some concerns about things like bowed driveways and sidewalks where the, where they put the tubing or whatever into the ground and they've done, they come up and bump the sidewalks and driveways. And so, and then the other thing that they may be doing is actually installing outside the easement lines. And so, my question to Mr. Titterington is, is who's, how is the oversight managed in this particular operation?
Sure. So, actually, we have two companies that are in various areas of town. MetroNet is doing pretty much the entire city. They are installing high-speed fiber for high-speed internet. There's also another company called Imagine Networks that is, right now anyway, targeting several subdivisions, one or two of which, I believe, are in your ward. I don't know which one you might be talking about. MetroNet is the one that's, again, because they're all over, is most familiar to folks. We, the city staff issues the right-of-way permits, and so we are inspecting those when they're going through. And so, we do have staff assigned to watch or go back on what, you know, whatever they're doing or not doing. We have had a few instances where the, the installs or at least the temporary work has gone outside of the easement. We have tried to catch those and pull those back into the easement. Where there might be problems, particularly with MetroNet, there is a number that we tell people, you talk to MetroNet directly. 99% of the time when there have been complaints, they've taken care of them and we don't hear from they've taken care of them and we don't hear from them again. But we do tell them that if they don't get satisfaction from MetroNet, then to call the City Engineering Office. And if you'd like, I can give you those phone numbers for the record. So, in talking to MetroNet, it's an 877 number, 877-386-3876. And then, again, if the, the complaint or if the resident or property owner doesn't feel the complaint was resolved to their satisfaction and needs to be escalated, then they can call the City Engineering Department at 339-9481.
Okay. Just one follow-up. If, if the sidewalk or driveway is damaged, where it had, and I've noticed that one sidewalk has been replaced out in the, in the Meadow Point area, do they need to get a permit to have that done?
It will be generally, probably be covered under the right-of-way permit, but if that has to be part of the repairs, repairs are, you know, are covered in the, in the right-of-way permit, so it's not a separate sidewalk permit. But again, we are out there inspecting all of the work related to the right-of-way work and so that would cover the sidewalk. And so, if it was not installed satisfactorily, then we'd make, we, we would make them redo it.
Okay. And if it's not satisfactorily with residents, then they would contact?
They would start, again, start with MetroNet.
MetroNet, okay.
But if they're not satisfied there, then we will attempt to take care of it.
Thank you so much.
Sure.
Any other questions from council members tonight? Seeing none, we will open up comments for city staff. Seeing none, we will open up comments for, for the general audience. Now is your time to speak. If you so wish, please come to the podium, give your name and address.
Lester Connor, 1210 South Clay Street, Troy, Ohio. First, I'd like to say I am glad to see some new faces, new positions. I look forward to working with you. I would like to ask, to me, this would just go along with the recycling program. Has the City of Troy thought about wind power and solar power? And if so, I think it'd be great if we could generate wind power and solar power in Troy, would save a lot of money, maybe for the businesses, for the schools, and maybe for the people. And myself personally, I'm a believer in the global warming. And I look at Australia and I just feel sorry for them, you know, and I hope that this, the Troy Daily News will ask each and every one of you your opinions on global warming and what your thoughts are on wind power and solar power. I mean, I think it'd be beneficial for the citizens to find out where you stand on these issues.